Welcome to the April 8th County Commission meeting. I'd like to recognize that Bob Wilcox from the South Dakota Commission Association is here somewhere and I don't even know where he went, but he is there. He is in the back row visiting us from here. Thank you for coming. I remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly and you'll have to find Ken if you're looking for listening devices and I think he left the room because Robert's gone today.
To any personal privilege?
Yes.
If everybody wonders why I'm wearing shop glasses.
Thought it was a new style.
My others broke and these are bifocused and they're the greatest ones in the world for me.
So I just thought it was just a new style.
That's reason I'm wearing dumb looking glasses.
With that, we'll move on.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with one amendment. I'd like to move item number 10 down to pass number 12 so Commissioner Benega can actually be involved in some of the other presentations.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the change of item number 10 being moved just past item number 12. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of April 1st, 2014.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from April 1st. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $332,460.75.
I'll make a motion with an amendment. I would like to change vendor number 48658. That's S-H-I International. I believe we have incorrectly downed that it was $3,139.89. That should be amended to be $6,279.78 and of course that will change the ultimate amount that is going to be paid from $329,320.86, which is what's on the agenda, to $332,460.75.
Second amendment.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bills with a change. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The Minnehaha County Human Services Report for March 2014 and the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department Report for March 2014 have both been received and are placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A is a motion to consider approval of the routine personnel actions.
Both routine action.
Motion.
Second.
And a second for routine actions. Are there any questions for HR or comments? Saying none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item six are application for abatement. Kyle Helseth.
Good morning, Commissioners. We bring before you one request this morning from the city of Hartford. This is for a piece of land that they purchased last year around November 1st. It is record ID 23776 and it's in the amount of $30.55.
I'll make that motion.
The motion and a second to approve the abatement for the city of Hartford. Any other comments or questions? Saying none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no notices and requests, there are no planning and zoning notices, and there are no petition for compromise of lien today. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is time for the public to have comments. If there's anything that they want to mention that's not on the agenda, this will be the time to come forward. Seeing none, I actually have one.
Well, we do have an item.
Oh, we do have one, okay.
Good morning, Ron Weber. I was here last week. I guess my comments this morning, number one is I want to thank the Commissioners or someone because someone did get out and clean up 41st Street. And it's appreciated. It's too bad you have to get after people to do their job. But 12th Street is a very close second or 41st extended or Highway 42 extended, whatever you want to call it. And a lot of, like I mentioned last week with the strong winds that we had, a lot of it is out into the fields and it's too late there, but I would think something could be done in visiting with the landowners. I'm sure they would welcome somebody to go out and clean up the garbage that isn't theirs. And the second thing is yesterday afternoon or evening I was out and raking my yard and I had a visitor from my neighbor, Mr. Erickson. And of course, he come over and questioned my interest in his building permit. And I told him that I didn't think it was correct to build it in his front yard and he told me to mind my own business. And I said, "Well, I think property values are important to everybody." And I said, "There's room in your backyard and a lot of other places you could put that storage shed." But anyhow, he said, "Mind my own business." And of course, I said, "Well, are you threatening me, Mr. Erickson?" And he said, "No." And he turned and he left. Well, last night in reviewing the ordinances, it appears to me that, number one, he has got several vehicles lined up like a truck stop on the right of way, next to the road. He has more than three recreational vehicles and he is running his business out of a residential area. And I don't know who's going to enforce those, but it's time it gets done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Weber. Did you get an address?
I don't have an address.
Okay, all right. Are there any other public comments?
Well, just to comment Mr. Weber's comments, I think we probably should again turn that back to Scott to investigate those charges and if they're unfounded and not worry about them. If they are founded, then we should probably take some action to get them enforced.
And I did have a public comment and I'm not going to run down there and do it. I'm going to do it from my desk. So I'm hoping that you'll indulge the commission for a short ride, Harley ride down memory lane. In April of 1979, the movie The Deer Hunter won the Academy Awards for Best Picture. President Jimmy Carter was attacked by a swamp rabbit while fishing in Plains, Georgia. And What the Fool Believes by the Doobie Brothers was topped the Billboard charts. Well, also in April of 1979, it was a significant month for Minnehaha County when a young man from Hills, Minnesota named Ken McFarland was hired as an appraiser in the equalization office. He was the hiring manager, which at that time was Kyle Helseth, reported that the department director was looking for someone who was not an appraiser. Mr. McFarland was hired and began his career at Minnehaha County just weeks after he got, just weeks before he got married to his wife Brenda. For the past 25 years, Ken has been the commission administrative officer and we know that there are several who have served the county longer, but you know, this, Ken is who serves this group up here on a day-to-day basis and we just want to take an opportunity to say thank you to him. He keeps us informed. He puts out fires on a weekly basis, sometimes daily and sometimes hourly. He works really hard to make us all look good even when we mess up. And I would just like to take the opportunity to thank him for serving Minnehaha County and the Commissioners and we greatly appreciate what you do for us. We've invited a couple of friends after the commission meeting to join us for cake and coffee next door. So Ken, we hope you'll stick around. And I apologize, we picked kind of a long day for, to serve you cake and coffee. The commission's got a lot of stuff going on, but we'll try to move through things and at least join you for a little bit. So I wondered if any other Commissioners had any comments.
Well, I've been on the commission for quite some time and I remember when, of course, I, the first time I ever saw Ken was in 1993 when I showed up down at his office to get a parking permit sticker for my car out here because I was working at the state's attorney's office and I needed to get a temporary permit. And of course, that's when I first met Ken, but honestly, Ken has been a pillar for county government, not only here in Minnehaha County, but for the state of South Dakota. And he is a resource for many other smaller counties that need to get some guidance. He is very, very gracious with his time. He not only is very well-versed in all the different statutory responsibilities, but also, I remember Dave Nelson pulling me aside, this is years ago, probably about, oh, let's see, about 10 years ago, and he said, "The best thing the commission has going is Ken McFarland." And he was honest when he said that. Of course, Dave's retired now, but that is high praise coming from the senior state's attorney from Minnehaha County singing the praises of Ken McFarland. And it couldn't be more true. I don't know anybody that would choose a job where you have five different bosses asking you to do something different every day of the week. And he does it consistently and with a smile. So thank you, Ken. We all know that and we all appreciate you very, very much.
Commissioner Kelly.
Well, last night we met with the townships and it was a good example of how much we depend on Ken because the discussion came up about the taxes and the equalization hearings we're going to have and I'm sitting there worried that they're going to call on me, but Ken jumps up and is able to address the question and his wealth of knowledge includes not only where all skeletons are buried, but also just everything that goes on in this county. And I think most of us know that he's in a winding down mode now. We aren't sure when, but within maybe the next 12 to 18 months. And whoever comes into that job is going to have huge, huge shoes to fill. He survived in that job through, and it's interesting because he was a registered Democrat in a very red state and red county and has survived for 30, 25 years in the position he's in. And I guess that's just some, that's a good example of how, how good he is and how much we depend on him.
I'll just make a couple of comments. I haven't known you as long, but certainly I have a huge appreciation for your abilities, the ability to get along with five bosses. I have trouble with one some days and she'll tell you that. And frankly, the way that you handle yourself professionally when things get somewhat ugly on occasion or the way you handle yourself with multiple personalities, multiple opinions is incredible. You're a gift to the county. I think that working with you, we've all learned to appreciate you and your institutional knowledge is incredible. I don't know how we will ever be able to replace that, to be honest. Excuse me, that's one of those things that, that you can't just hire. You frankly have to have somebody with unique skills and abilities and you have those skills and abilities. I'll tell you one cute story. Last year when I was the commissioner before Commissioner Hyburger, I changed my phone ring so I knew when you were calling to a motorcycle because of your motorcycle background. And we were on vacation and my, it rang frequently with a motorcycle sound and my wife finally looked at me and she says, "Does that guy ever go to bed?" So his work ethic is incredible and we all are deeply indebted to you and your skills. So thank you.
I must be doing something right. He doesn't call me near that often. So thank you, Ken, very much. And with that, I think we will move on.
Okay. Item number 11 is a presentation by Siegel Consulting on compensation philosophy and pay delivery systems. This was deferred through April 1st, 2014. Carrie Deaver.
Good morning. Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. It's my pleasure to introduce to you again Elliot Suszles from Siegel Consulting, who's here to do two things for you. First, to give you a little information about the report status and when we can expect final data. And second, to give you information and education really about different types of options that you can look at and consider for choosing a compensation plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Elliot.
Morning Commissioners. Elliot Suszles from the Siegel Company. Glad to be back with you. As Carrie indicated, what I'd like to do today is give you a brief update on where we are in terms of the study that you've engaged us for. And as the agenda points out, to talk a little bit about compensation philosophy, although this hopefully won't be too esoteric, and some considerations in terms of paid delivery systems. And let me just comment very briefly that when we're talking about comp philosophy, we've actually had some discussion as a preface to the study in terms of who do you want to compare yourselves to and so forth. But with regard to paid delivery systems, what we're really talking about is how does the workforce, how should the workforce be recognized for the services that it provides over time? And we'll be talking a little bit about the pros and cons of that as we go through the I wanted to start out first of all with a little bit of overview with regard to the main purpose of the engagement, which was to evaluate the competitiveness of total compensation. We are still finalizing the data for this, so what I'm going to present to you is a very high-level overview, but I think important at this, at this stage of the process, we will have the final report available toward the end of this month. So I just want to give you a kind of timeframe for that. As you may recall, we were engaged to look at the competitiveness of total compensation. Total compensation obviously has several components to it. There's the most obvious, which is what folks get paid for the work that they do for the county, what the pay practices are, paid leave benefits, the degree to which people receive vacation and sick leave and holiday pay and how that fleshes out in the marketplace, as well as the cost of health benefits and the cost of retirement benefits. So we look at those across both public sector and private sector employers, as you asked us to do. And we conducted, there's really two pieces of this. With regard to the public sector employers, we conducted what we call a custom survey where we developed a survey document indicating, requesting information on a variety of jobs and sent that out to 12 comparable counties and cities and the state of South Dakota itself. And this slide here just gives you the listing of those employers. With regard to the private sector, we gathered private sector data from published data sources that are representative of that component. And we've taken the data and looked at it in terms of the competitiveness of the county with respect to the public sector, with respect to the private sector, and with respect to the market overall. So one of the issues in compensation philosophy is who do you want to compare yourselves to? So we've kind of given you the two major flavors, if you will, in the marketplace of public sector and, and private sector employers. So if we look at this overall, now we collected data for 60 benchmark jobs, jobs that are representative of all functions of the county. And when we look at the competitiveness of pay in this slide, I think it's important for me to give you some context. So we gather this information and we look at how the county compares to the average of these public sector employers and private sector employers. And so in this slide, you see percentages that say, how does the county compare to the public sector at the minimum of the pay ranges, at the midpoint and the maximum? So there are pay ranges for every job in your pay structure and we looked at 60 of those jobs. And this is the 50,000-foot analysis. The detail will be available once that report is finalized. But the significance of these numbers is important. We, we have a rule of thumb, if you will, that an employer or a job that an employer may have is at market if it's between 95 and 105% of the market average. So what you see here in the top part of this slide is as we look across those 60 benchmark jobs and we look at the public sector employers that we just indicated on the prior slide, the 12 public sector employers. Basically, those 60 jobs are at market. They're within that 95 to 105% corridor. 102% at minimum, 103% at midpoint, 104% at the maximum of the pay range. If you look at the private sector data, now obviously there is not going to be private sector data for all 60 jobs because some of those jobs are unique to government. But for those jobs that are, do have analogs in the private sector, you see that in the private sector, you're at 97% of the minimum, 111% of the midpoint and 120% of the maximum. So what that suggests is for those jobs that do have an analog in the, in the private sector, that those jobs in that paradigm of 95 to 105% are well-compensated. When we look at the combination overall, when we look at the public sector and the private sector, which is the bottom row in the top part of the slide, you'll see that you're, you're right at market at the minimum, 100%, 104% at the midpoint, the middle of the pay range, and 106% at the maximum. So we would say overall that for those 60 jobs that are very representative of the workforce, that your pay ranges are market competitive. Now, I say that at 50, at the 50,000-foot level, but I think we will find, and I'm not prepared to, to get into this granularity today, you should not walk away from this saying everything is wonderful, that there are going to be some jobs that are below market, some jobs that are above market, some jobs that are at market, but on average, it all looks rosy. But you may find some challenges as, as we drill down into the market data. Now, so that's the pay competitiveness piece and it's just pay ranges, just if we compare midpoint, minimum to minimum, maximum to maximum for these 60 jobs. It doesn't speak, for example, and we're going to talk about this in a minute, to how people progress through the ranges. So there's really two questions. Are the ranges competitive? And then how do people move through the ranges? And that's also part of the compensation philosophy. But before I get to that, I wanted to add the pieces of the puzzle together because I said we looked at, as you requested, total compensation. And the lower part of this slide, which reflects the pay piece, the first box on the left of 104%, which is your competitive position overall across those 60 jobs, public and private sector combined, at the midpoint of the pay range. We then add to that, what are the costs for health benefits and retirement benefits? And we do this without getting overly technical, is we take a look on the health benefit side at the distribution of county employees and how they're enrolled by tier of coverage, single family, that sort of thing, and then apply that to the costs in the other, for the other employers. In the case here, actually, you're paying 91% of the market average for health benefits and 78% for retirement benefits. Now, you may say, "What's the reason for this 91%? That's red, it's below market." Well, the fact of the matter is while the county's contribution is slightly less than the market, I think the county pays 70% of the cost and the employee pays 30% of the cost, the market overall is about an 80/20 split, but it does vary by tier of coverage. But the fact of the matter is you have a generous health benefit plan in terms of deductibles and co-pays, so it's not necessarily unusual to see that the employer might pay something less than the, than the average for the, the cost of health benefits, while the richness of the benefits that is available to those who may use the benefits is, is quite generous. So I always want to put a context in each of these numbers so that you don't walk away with a soundbite that may be misinterpreted. With regard to the total retirement benefits, this is just simply a question of what percent of pay are you contributing on an actuarial basis to the benefit plans? It's not looking at the relative richness of the benefits. This is purely as, as someone who used to be a budget person in government, just simply what's the cost to the county and how does that cost compare to your peers? Interestingly, when you add these pieces together, overall, again at this 50,000-foot level, Minnehaha's total compensation costs as a percent of the market is right at 100%. So you add the pieces together, you are market competitive, but you can see as you look at these different components, that there is some variation, particularly on the benefits side, that's, that's offsetting pay by a little bit. Some other general findings that we have, interest in the structure, you know, how do people move through the pay ranges? Most of the employers that we looked at have grade and step pay schedules, not dissimilar to the counties. Most peer employers progress their employees through the pay range based on longevity, not dissimilar from the county. One thing that is something of note at this juncture is it takes 18 years to move through your pay structure. That 18 years is significantly longer than what we see on average for those folks, those employers that have step pay programs. So when you look at the prior slide that says your pay ranges overall at my 50,000-foot are competitive, what I do have to point out is that while the pay ranges may be competitive, there may be some variation for individual jobs, but the fact is it takes a long time for employees to progress through the pay ranges. So that's something I think to consider in terms of compensation philosophy, in terms of consideration of, quite frankly, how competitive your pay range, pay is, paid delivery is what we talk about in terms of how people move through the pay ranges. Just moving on real quickly, most peer employers have the traditional leave program, separate categories for sick, vacation and, and holiday. We've already pointed out that the county's contribution to health benefits is less than the market, but quite frankly, that's in some degrees offset by the richness of the plan design in terms of lower deductibles and generous co-pays and so forth. And the same thing with the defined benefit retirement plan, which is really a function of differences in actuarial valuations and funding and so forth. But from a cost standpoint, you are contributing slightly less than the market. Which really brings us to this issue of the compensation philosophy and what this compensation philosophy really defines, and I'm just going to go through this really quickly so that we get to the kind of meat of, of the issue, but it really is, it defines the pay plan, what the pay plan should look like and how it aligns with the county's organizational goals. It defines where your desired market position is. The numbers that I gave you are where the county sits for pay ranges relative to the average of the marketplace, okay? It's certainly important in defining a compensation philosophy to say, "Where do you want to be?" There's nothing wrong with being at the average of the marketplace. Sometimes there are fiscal constraints that force organizations to be at different places. Some are fortunate enough to actually set a compensation philosophy higher than the average of the marketplace, but I wanted you to understand that the context of the numbers I shared with you is to say that the market position is at the average of the market. You want to look at the desired mix of total compensation. What's the importance of pay? What's the importance of benefits? You want to look at the degree to which pay increases are determined by performance ratings. So is it just moving, you're here another year and you move a step, which quite frankly, we see in a lot of your peer, peers, or do you want to add some element of performance beyond just being satisfactory as the key to moving a step here at the county? You want to have, what I like to say, the difference between a light switch approach and a dimmer. You're either on or off, you're either satisfactory and then you get a step as opposed to is there some fine tuning that could occur depending upon your level of performance? How the county values jobs. Some employers say, "We want to be at market and whatever the market says for various jobs and various job families, that's how we want to look at our competitiveness." Others focus on what we call the internal value of jobs, how jobs rate against one another in terms of complexity, in terms of supervision, in terms of impact of action. And obviously, you're here to set that policy, HR and others to govern the pay administration policy, but these are all elements within a compensation philosophy that we think need to be considered. In terms of, in terms of performance pay options, there are several ways of looking at it. So if you wanted to move from your step system to something else, you can base performance pay in a variety of ways. There can be organization-wide base pay increases so that you set up a philosophy that if the county meets certain goals, that that affects pay. There can be one-time performance bonuses so that don't, that recognize certain performance, certain outcomes that don't necessarily recur, build into base pay and, and generate increasing costs in the long run. costs in the long run. There can be individual or team-based pay increases, or there can be individual or team one-time performance incentives. All of this, and I know from time to time, I talk to commissioners, to legislative bodies, interest in, how do we move, or do we want to move? Do we want to consider a compensation philosophy of moving from where we are today, which is fundamentally a step-based system based on satisfactory performance, to something other than that? And the infrastructure that's required to do that is not insignificant. That's not to say organizations shouldn't do it, it's not to say that performance shouldn't be rewarded, but one has to think of a couple of things. One is, there has to be appropriate training for supervisors to do this, to make sure it's credible with the workforce. There has to be a commitment to funding of this. So once you say to a workforce, a piece of your compensation is going to be driven by performance, people have to say, well, is there going to be funding for it, or is this a one-time event? There has to be some certainty of this process moving forward. Obviously, the step program is in place, so people can see from one year to the next what kind of increases they could enjoy, aside from across-the-board increases that you may determine are unnecessary at one point or another. But I thought I'd put together a slide giving you the pros and cons of this, not suggesting you go one way or another, but be thoughtful if you are considering moving from where you are to something other than that. So if we start with where we are today, if we start with the step-based pay structure, it's obviously, it's predictable. As an old budget person, it's nice to know what your distribution of employees are, where they are today in the pay structure, where they're going to be next year and the year after, and give some predictability in terms of future costs, forecasting them. It's easy to administer, it's understandable, people know you're managing expectations, you know where they may progress over time. Obviously, the con side of the step structure is that it doesn't give you the ability to differentiate pay based on people's performance. I like to use, actually, to say, contribution. It's employees' contribution to the county, to the services that are delivered to your constituents. One of the things it does do is, as people move through the pay structure, just by nature, we get older, and so it is rewarding a workforce, the costs tend to escalate as the workforce ages. And it does prevent managers, or it gives managers little flexibility in terms of truly rewarding high performers. The other thing we see that it does, as a con, is if there's a need to reward somebody, it tends to lead to what we call job reclassification requests. How do I deliver pay to John who's been a superior performer, because I can't do it than the pay system? I'm now going to put in a reclassification request. Let's assume John is a widget maker one, we now make John a widget maker two, has the way to deliver more pay to reward that performance. So it's a kind of a workaround, but we see it all over the country, so it happens, we should be aware of that. The other alternative that you find in most performance-based or contribution-based systems are open pay ranges. So you get rid of the steps completely, you have market-competitive ranges, and you set up rules that tie variations in rewards year over year, based upon performance goals that are set at the beginning of the year, based on reviews that occur periodically during the year, and administer it that way. Now, that requires a lot of communication to the workforce, it requires a lot of training of supervisors. There certainly can be some perceptions of favoritism, you know, why did this person get the top reward year after year? So yeah, I think you have to keep that in mind. Creates an administrative burden on HR, because HR then becomes the focal point of controlling it, makes sure that everybody is judging people in a fair and equitable manner. So those are the kind of the two extremes, if you will. Continue with what you have, or go to this kind of open range of pay for performance. But there is an approach, that's a midway approach, we call it the hybrid approach. And the notion is, you want to get people to move to what we might call the market rate of pay, which is kind of the midpoint of the pay range. And you could do that through an existing step structure, you could change the number of steps, that's all open to discussion. But then, once a person reaches that market rate of pay, that midpoint, you can then take the other half of the pay range and use that movement through that half of the pay range based upon performance and utilize the same process of setting goals and performance reviews and so forth to determine that. So I think that where we are is here to address two questions. One was, what do the pay ranges look like? How competitive are your pay ranges? And again, overall, we think they're competitive with some variation on particular jobs. I do think that attention probably needs to be paid to, although the pay ranges are competitive, if you keep your steps, that it does take a very long period of time to get from minimum to maximum. I'm not saying that subjectively, I'm saying that based upon the data from your peers, people tend to move more quickly. So if you think about this very quickly, if you had a job and your pay ranges were identical to your peers, so there was no difference in pay, but yours takes eighteen years to get to the maximum and others take ten years, I'm just picking a number, obviously, that employer is an employer of choice compared to taking eighteen years, because you make more money over your career under that circumstance. I think the challenges in changing pay delivery are administrative, or education, of fairness, of investing in all that it takes, both from a funding standpoint year over year, and from ensuring that the process is fair and equitable over time. Those are not insignificant challenges in moving from, if you were to move from one form to the other. So with that, I don't want to overstay my welcome, I'm happy to take questions if you have any.
This is kind of an overview today, but we're open to questions. We're just going to make final decisions later this summer on what we're going to move forward with. Commissioner Kelly?
I'm not sure if we're going to have another opportunity to see you, though. So if you speed up, let's say you went from eighteen to ten years to hit the top, what happens to those people that are past ten years? I mean, you know, let's say they're going to, they're looking at a twenty-five-year, twenty-year career with the county. What happens after that tenth year? How do we keep competitive with the marketplace? Because there's a lot of merit, usually, to the institutional knowledge they have and everything else, and how do you rectify that? I agree with you, I think in the early time, I know Cindy and I have talked about, or Karen and I have talked about, you know, maybe in the first two or three years having four step increases instead of three, but...
Well, I think that there are several ways of dealing with it, but if you, right now, your steps are, I think, two-and-a-half percent between steps, and you get eighteen years, and you should get about fifty percent difference between minimum and maximum of the pay ranges. If you were to reduce the steps, keep the pay range, the dollar value of the pay ranges what they are, the value of those steps increase. So if you went, Commissioner, to ten steps, instead of it being two-and-a-half percent between steps, it'd probably be about four percent, maybe a little bit more per step. So everybody, no matter what step they're in, except at the top of the pay range, would enjoy a pay increase.
Well, except those that have stepped out, that are, that's what I'm asking, is when they hit the, you know, at ten years, let's say they've hit their max, how are you going to keep that employee?
Well, I think, I think the challenge that any employer faces is part of this compensation philosophy. Where do you want to be in the market? What's your philosophy with regard to rewarding longevity? That can be certainly an issue within the compensation philosophy. So you could have a performance-based system that has a longevity reward component tacked onto it. Doesn't have to be one or the other. My hybrid approach was just one suggestion of many. But I think the challenge of retaining people with institutional knowledge is one that everyone faces. Quite frankly, the defined benefit retirement system is something that acts as a retention tool to long-service employees. So it doesn't have to be on the pay side, it can be on the benefit side.
Just one quick question before we get more details down the road, but when you look at your vast experience of doing these surveys, how many people have you worked with are doing the step program? How many are doing the hybrid program, and how many of them are doing just the pay for performance? And is there a trend there between those three pieces? And I know you can't give me an exact number, I just need some sort of philosophy, I guess.
Well, I think it's fair to say that the public sector is moving from steps based purely on longevity, okay, to some variation on it. If you were to take a random sample of pay schedules, would you see more steps? Absolutely. The real challenge is, in the compensation philosophy, should employees just enjoy more pay because they're there another year? I think we're seeing more employers saying, we need a better test than that, given the scarce resources that we have, and at the same time, they need to retain the really good employees. So could you keep a step structure and perhaps use that as a reward tool? Sure. So you could, the federal government has what are called quality step increases, so even though they have an eighteen-year longevity system, you can actually get an extra step based on performance. So there are different ways of doing it, but there still are more flavors of step-based systems in the public sector.
You want to try to put a percentage on that, or not, at this point?
If it's more than half, how about that? That's about, that's about as fair as I'm going to go off the top of my head.
Okay.
Any other questions? We will be diving into this much more thoroughly, the report's not completed, this was just kind of an overview to get us started, give us some things to think about. Say none, thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item number twelve is a presentation of the Minnehaw County Correctional Facilities interim report by the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. Craig Anderson and Bill Garnos will be presenters.
Morning Commissioners, my name is Craig Anderson. I am the Public Representative and the Chair of the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, which we established approximately a year ago now. I have the privilege this morning of presenting to you our interim report on our evaluation of our correctional facilities in the county. And I have with me Bill Garnos, who has performed the inmate forecast study, and as we'll see in a few minutes, we'll get to the importance of that study in going through our recommendations. What I'd like to do this morning is simply walk through the recommendations that we have, beginning on page four of our report, and give you some of the, an overview of the reasons why we made these particular recommendations. We, of course, have a lot of detailed material, including the minutes of our meetings, our discussions, and supporting information that are on our public website. They're available to you, they're available to the public, and I don't believe, really, we have time this morning to get into all the details, so I'll just refer you to those sources for those details. Before we actually look at the recommendations, I'd just like to start out with a few kind of background comments. Our correctional facilities are set in a real complex environment, and it involves a lot of externalities that we, as a commissioner, as running a county jail, we don't have control of. I'm speaking here, to begin with, of the social, economic, and cultural background of the community that we live in. We know that this background can influence individuals to commit crimes, we know it can influence the severity of those crimes. The, there have been many studies over the years of the cause and effect relationship between these factors, and what can be expected in terms of inmate population and the impact on crime. Our committee did not address all those factors. We don't think that those factors can be quantitatively determined. What we've done instead, and as you'll see in a few minutes, is we've relied on statistical techniques to help us estimate what the future inmate population might look like, but I think we have to remember, as we go through these recommendations, that there are things that we can do as a county, as a community, as a state, and even at the federal level, that can influence crime, and by influencing crime, influence the demand on our facilities. However, it was the committee's view that the best way to deal with all of these factors is to do so on a statistical basis, and certainly my opinion, that that's the most effective way to proceed in terms of planning for the capacity of our facilities. The other environmental factor that complicates what we're trying to do with our correctional facilities is that we have multiple jurisdictions that rely on our facility. We have federal jurisdiction, the federal district court, and more particularly, the U.S. Marshals Office. We have state offices that are involved, the court system in our county, the state's attorney's office in our county. We have county, of course, the sheriff's office, his various subdivisions, but we also have the surrounding counties that rely on our facility, and particularly Lincoln County, as Sioux Falls is expanding into Lincoln County, and Turner County in South Dakota. Then we have the local issue, and the big local issue for us, as it is in so many different areas in the county planning, is Sioux Falls. And the fact that Sioux Falls is growing rapidly south into Lincoln County, and that introduces issues of cooperation and working together with the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. So all of these factors really make for a complex environment, and a lot of external factors that impact on our jail facilities. Now, we've been very fortunate in this region to have a number of individuals serving in key positions in these various agencies that have worked very well together. I'm particularly thinking of the state's attorney's office, the sheriff's office, the court system in Minnehaw County here, and it's, I need to just take a moment to give my personal thanks to these people, because the professionalism, the innovation, the creativity that they demonstrated is just amazing to me. It's the reason why we live in a community that's as safe as it is, and even with all the problems that we face in law enforcement, the fact that these individuals and these agencies can all work together to cooperate to address those problems, we're really blessed for that. And as the public member of the committee, I want to reassure the other members of our community that these issues are being proactively addressed by the individuals that are responsible here, and certainly express my appreciation, and our appreciation as a community, to the work that the commission does, to the work that the county does, and to the work that all of these other agencies do. Now, having said that, we nevertheless have a responsibility to provide these people with adequate resources to address the problems. And part of those adequate resources are adequate correctional facilities. Our committee, the genesis of our committee came out of this December 2012 report by the National Institute of Corrections. It was a technical assistance report, this is on our website, and I believe available to all of you. And this report was primarily an evaluation of the County Correctional Center, which is the old Elks Club, which is out across, or near the arena. And originally, our committee was tasked with a review of that correctional facility and to make recommendations with respect to that. We quickly confirmed the conclusions reached in that prior study. And if you go to page four of our report, our first recommendation is that the present correction center is inadequate, it should be phased out, it should be repurposed for another county purpose, or it should simply be sold. The reason is, well, there's really two primary reasons for this. The first one is that the, with advances in modern technology, the old work-release concept has rapidly changed. So most of the people that we have on work-release are now in an alternative program, they don't really use this center, they're using ankle braces, for example, to monitor where they are when they're not at work. And so the, as a result of this, the mix of the people that are being held at the correctional center has changed over the years, especially over the past five years, as these new programs have been implemented. By that, I mean that the County Correctional Center is now used as an overflow for our jail, which has already, in many senses, reached its capacity. So what we have here are people being shifted from the jail, where they're normally kept inside and under supervision the entire day, out to the County Correctional Facility. But that facility was never designed for day-long monitoring of inmates. Moreover, that facility is aging. We had information presented to our committee that it would cost approximately eight-hundred-thousand dollars over the next few years just to maintain that facility as it is. But the facility as it is is inadequate. The structure of the dorm rooms are inadequate for proper supervision, the structure of the facility itself was never built as a jail, it was built as a country club, those are two very different things. And I think that the experience we had last January, where we had an inmate break out... And I think that the experience we had last January, where we had an inmate break out, is something that we're going to experience more and more if we continue to shift more high-risk inmates from the county jail to this correctional center. Now, I have to say that the sheriff's office employs a very sophisticated method of scoring and evaluating inmates, so that we are not sending high-risk inmates out there. I don't want to suggest that that's the case at all. I think that they've done a magnificent job in doing this. We reviewed that system. We concluded that that system is adequate. But the truth of the matter is, if we place higher-risk people in that facility, we have a higher risk for problems occurring in that facility. And while the exact timeline as to when that facility becomes totally inadequate is unknown, we do know that as the jail becomes increasingly crowded, and we need to make use of that facility for more high-risk prisoners, we are going to eventually have more and more security problems. So the present County Correctional Center, it's inadequate. It should not be used for, as a correctional facility. It needs to be phased out. Phasing out that facility, of course, leaves us with a deficit of beds for inmates. We have approximately 400 beds in the present jail. There are approximately, from 160 to 180 beds in the correctional center. If we were to close the correctional center, we have a deficit immediately facing us. So with that in mind, and we reached this conclusion as a committee relatively early in our deliberations, but it did not seem to us that that was sufficient for your purposes, because a logical next question is, well, if we're going to phase out the correctional center, what do we do? And if we're just talking about phasing out the correctional center, that's one thing, but it makes no sense to do just that if we have another problem lurking over in the jail itself, which is already near or at capacity in many situations. So what we did as a committee is, we decided that we needed to have a more comprehensive look at our correctional facilities overall. And if you'll recall, we came back to the commission and asked for authorization to hire an expert to come in and give us a forecast of what we thought the total inmate, or total jail capacity needed to be for our county. And that study was performed to us, performed for us by Bill Garnos. If you look at our recommendation number two, we recommend that we begin the planning process for the addition of at least 400 new inmate beds over the next 10 years. While those numbers are not magic, the 400 number would be in addition to our existing 400-bed facility. That number comes from Mr. Garnos's study. The 10-year period is a study period in part of the forecast that Mr. Garnos prepared. So, Madam Chair, at this point, I think it would be of very interest to the commission, and I think important, that you hear from Mr. Garnos with regard to the methodology that underlies his study and some of the conclusions that he reached. And then I'll come back up and talk further about actions we would like the commission to take.
Okay. Thank you. Bill?
Bill.
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. I never get to follow a compensation study. I'm just very excited. I'm Bill Garnos. I'm the jail consultant. I had the privilege of working with the advisory committee on the analysis of inmate population trends in the county, the development of some inmate population projections, and a forecast of jail capacity requirements to help you with your facility planning decisions. Commissioner Benninga and Commissioner Kelly, I believe, have sat through three long and boring presentations by me. And I believe Chairman Heiburger and Commissioner Barth sat through the final and longest presentation three months ago to the advisory committee. So in the interests of mercy, I will not be going through the 85 slides that were presented at that time. But I did want to remind you that the final report has a lot of good information in it. And if you, as you're going forward with facility planning, if you have questions or issues regarding various breakdowns of the inmate population, the county has very good data, and the data's been put together as best I could in the final report. So if you're looking for a breakdown of your inmate population trends or numbers by gender, the numbers are in there. There's breakdowns by jurisdiction, showing trends in the numbers of Minnehaha County inmates versus the numbers of federal inmates, inmates from other counties, and state DOC inmates. There's breakdowns of inmates at the main downtown jail versus inmates at the CCC. There's a breakdown of your inmate population by classification or security requirements, trends in the numbers on work release. And then it also has information in it on the high and low population each month. So you can see how much your inmate population fluctuates, up and down each month, and that you have to have correctional facilities to provide for. There were two slides included in the interim report, and with your permission, I just wanted to speak to those two. If I can get to them. The dark gray part shows the average daily population each month of Minnehaha County inmates only from 2005 to present. So for projections, and again, this is just for facility planning purposes, I ran five different projection models, models one through five, from the top down. The top model, the one that came in at the highest rate, was one that was looking at your, just simply a linear trend of your average daily population from 2007 to present. So it was about six and three-quarters years. If it continues to increase at the rate it has since the beginning of 2007, you can see the numbers are going up very rapidly. The model that I used and recommended for facility planning purposes was Model Two. You can see it's sort of the mid-range model, going all the way back to 2005, and using sort of a longer base for projection purposes. And it came in at the middle of the range. And again, this is just a linear trend. If your inmate population continues to increase at the rate that it has since 2005, here's where we're headed. I ran three other models. One of them, the first one on Model Three, is one based on your average length of stay. So we calculated what your average length of stay in the jail is, and applied that against your booking trends to see where we're headed, if that is what is going to drive the numbers. Model Four is another fairly routine inmate population forecasting technique called rate of incarceration, where we looked at how many inmates, Minnehaha County inmates, you have per thousand residents, and applied that, then, to the county's population projections and decided where that's headed. The low number was an adjustment to the rate of incarceration. We know that 20- to 44-year-old males are the population group that primarily contribute to the jail population. So instead of looking at the county population as a whole, we just applied the rate of incarceration to that population subgroup. And while Minnehaha County's population is obviously going up, the number of 20- to 44-year-old males in the county are not projected to increase as quickly. So when I ran that methodology on Model Five, I ended up with the low end of the range for facility planning purposes. So it's sort of like when you see them making projections of where the hurricane is going. You see those spaghetti maps, and they're going, may go to the left, may go to the right, can go all over. Different legitimate models come up with a broad range of where your inmate population could go. For facility planning purposes, based on this and all the other information in the study, I was suggesting the middle range, Model Two, as a baseline for average daily And then, we converted it. And then we made three adjustments to that baseline average daily population. The first adjustment, we made a very minor adjustment to accommodate the projected, estimated impact of Senate Bill 70, the criminal justice initiative, because the impact of that is not reflected in the historical data. So I made a slight increase to adjust for Senate Bill 70, and worked with the advisory committee on making that change. And then we added a peaking factor of 6.7% each month on average, the inmate population. The peak population each month is about 6.7% higher than the average for that month. So we added in a peaking factor. And then a classification factor, I don't like to use the term wiggle room, but enough additional capacity to allow for the separation and segregation of different types of inmates, so you have enough capacity to accommodate males and females, as well as inmates of minimum, medium, and maximum security. So, you know, if you had 500 inmates and 500 beds, it would never fit, because you would never have that perfect mix for what you've got for capacity. So with those three adjustments, I came up with total jail capacity requirements, again, just for facility planning purposes. You see the numbers, and again, those are beds, not inmates, in five-year increments for Minnehaha County. I used a similar methodology for trying to estimate your bed needs to accommodate the other counties that you're currently accommodating. And then I added an allowance of 50 beds for the federal inmates, as well as 35 beds for DOC inmates, primarily female work release that you're housing. And then there's a handful that help provide services at the main jail, and kitchen and janitorial, to estimate total jail beds required. This is where the 400 number comes in. You've got 400 beds in your current jail. It looks like in 10 years, you're going to be pushing the need for 800 beds. And I think this is where the advisory committee said, "We need to start looking toward 400 additional beds." Before I go, I also wanted to, of course, thank the advisory committee for their diligent work on this. I think Chairman Anderson and Robert Wilson did a very good job in their interim report of focusing in on what the key issues are from a lot of data and a lot of testimony. And of course, wanted to thank Sheriff Milstead, Chief Deputy Boyd, and Warden Gromer for having just excellent data available to hopefully assist you with this difficult planning process. I think the bottom line is, it's probably time to move from the needs assessment phase into more of an analysis of what your facility options are and what makes the most sense for you.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Bill at this point? All right. Then we'll go back to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm back. I brought Bill here to answer your questions, by the way, so.
We didn't have any.
Yeah. You really have to do the whole slide presentation to appreciate the complexity of what he's attempted and performed for us here. And I have to say, in my 30 years of business management, where we use statistical techniques like this to forecast, the work that Bill's done is credible. I find it persuasive, and I also think it's very comprehensive. I think we were well-advised to retain him, and he did a very good job for us. So the crux of recommendation number two, the target that we need to look at, is reliance on Bill's report, and I think that it is, all things considered, the most reasonable thing that we can do at this point from a facilities planning standpoint. Recommendation number three is really kind of an introduction to what I think the next report is going to look like coming out of the committee. We discussed, and it was a brief discussion, just building another second jail of 400 beds and staffing that jail, and we'd be done with it. We could do that in about three years. We wouldn't have to worry about things for 10 years. Well, obviously, there are some resource constraints on us for doing that, because the cost of such a facility would be easily more than $20 million. The location for such a facility would dwarf the disputes that we have today with Walmart on the city level. The NIMBY problem, and it's a very real problem, and I acknowledge it, would be a challenge for us. But the real factor that makes it impractical to do that is the operating cost factor. Sheriff's Office estimated that to operate a facility of that size in a separate location would be about $8 million per year. And that kind of burden on top of the county's existing operating budget means property tax increases that I just think are just not sustainable, not realistic. So, and I think it's important to note that it's also not necessary, because what we're really looking at here is an ability to phase out the existential, or the existing correctional center, add additional beds, but do so in an incremental fashion over a period of years. And so what we're really trying to do here in recommendation number three, all we're saying is that the direction the committee is going to take, assuming that you authorize us to do so, is to look at a 10-year plan that does these things in an incremental fashion, and does these things on parallel paths, so that we can build some facilities, phase out the correctional center, shift the beds over to those facilities, and then perhaps build some additional facilities in subsequent years, and not do it all in one step. We think that the best location to do this is directly proximate to the existing facility, because it allows the sheriff to leverage the existing staff that we have. Now, that's going to require some creative thinking. Can we remodel the public safety building? Maybe part of the facility requirements can come from that. Can we add on to the existing jail? Do we build up? It was originally designed to do that. There are some difficulties doing that. Can we build out? Maybe what we do is, we close off Fourth Street and just, you know, extend to the north there, the existing jail. These are all things that I think need to be considered, and the committee would like to consider, but the committee can't consider that without additional resources. Specifically, we need to retain qualified architectural and engineering firm to let us know what the availability would be, and to try to give us an idea of what a facility, a new facility, could look like, where that facility would be, and then evaluate the operational impacts of that. So recommendation three is more informational than it is requiring action, because it's, it gives you an idea of the direction that we think as a committee, and that I think as Chair of the committee, we need to take in order to prepare a real plan that can result in real action to address the issues that we have. And finally, if you turn to page six of the report, we have some actions that we would like the commission to take. If they could be taken this morning, that would be great. If you would like to defer them and take them up in a later meeting, I certainly understand that. But I've listed them here for your consideration. One is, we would like the commission to formally accept this report. We think the report is important. We think it contains valuable information and provides certainly the background for what we've done and what we need to do. We would like the commission to accept the Garnos forecast. As I said, I think it is the best statistical tool we have for planning purposes as we move forward. We obviously would like you to authorize the committee to proceed with a more detailed planning study, the items that we just discussed in recommendation number three. And then specifically, we need the commission to retain architectural and structural engineering consultants. If you'd like to authorize the committee to select those consultants for your approval, we'd be happy to do that. If you'd like to do it directly as a commission, we'd be happy for you to do that. And finally, I think the time has come that we need to reach out to some of these other agencies. So we return full circle now to the beginning of my presentation. The fact is, the jail serves a number of constituents, a number of other governmental entities. Those entities need to be involved in planning for the facility. More importantly, I think we need to explore financial and other contributions from these other entities. And I'm specifically thinking of the state, the city of Sioux Falls, and Lincoln County. Now, I am not a politician. I'll just step back from all the political ramifications of it, and I'm happy to dump it in your lap as a commission. But with the growth of Sioux Falls and the Lincoln County, and the fact that both Sioux Falls and Lincoln County depends upon the county jail facilities, those other entities need to be involved in the planning process, need to understand the challenges we face, and quite frankly, in my opinion, need to consider financial contribution to both the capital cost and the operating costs. And therein lies the political issues. So with that, Madam Chair, that concludes our report. I'm happy to answer questions, and I'm happy to proceed as you would, as the commission would like us to.
Do you have any questions right now for Mr. Anderson? Mr. Kelly?
Just a comment. Craig, you've done an excellent job of summarizing a very lengthy, if you look through, I don't know, it's about that thick, if I remember correctly. And I appreciate, you know, what you've done there to summarize for the other members of the commission. Gerald and I have been through this thing for so long, I think we can sleep about it. But...
But thank you for the good summary, and you've given us what the committee really looked at as four recommendations to continue this process.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Benega?
I would like to reiterate what Mr. Kelly just said. I've been involved in lots of studies and lots of committees, but Craig, your leadership was incredible. You kept us on track, and frankly, we were able to get to the core of all the issues relatively quickly in about a year's period of time. Seems like a long time, but with Mr. Garnos's help and your dedication to make sure this thing was going to happen, it happened in a timely timeframe. I guess my final comment would be is that I do think when we get to this next step, which I think is imperative, that we need to know all the options that we have on the plate, what those options are going to cost us, and what those options could be as alternatives. And the only way we're going to do that is to have multiple committees address each piece of those, from funding to architectural, to site locations, to budget issues, to funding issues, finance issues. All those things are going to need to be addressed at one time, and I don't believe this committee can do that by itself by any stretch. But I'd still like to retain Craig's leadership and to be able to ask him to continue, if you will, with the direction of that. And obviously, his business expertise is exactly what we're looking for. So I guess my final thought would be, would be for the county commission to accept the recommendations of the study group, if you will, and then move forward with the ability to come back in a timeframe to at least start looking at options that are reasonable and affordable to the process that we've started.
If I may, I agree with Commissioner Benega's assessment that we need to involve a lot more people now as we move forward. We do need to be involved in subcommittee or task force arrangements, but it is going to be important to have a central steering committee. I don't know that the Commission wants to do that, although you certainly could. And my view is that that's a role that your Advisory Committee could play if you so choose to do so, and in fact, my recommendation would be that we handle it that way. That would mean that we'd be expanding the membership of that committee to include the chairs of the various task forces, and would also mean that we would be actively forming task forces and soliciting additional outside participation in those task forces. But I would agree with that.
Mr. Kelly, have a comment?
Well, Gerald, if that's a motion, I would hope that we would include accepting the report and the four recommendations.
I think we'll take them one at a time.
Each one?
If you don't mind.
Okay. Well, I'll second his motion.
I didn't really make a motion.
I wasn't quite ready yet.
I would like to hear from the sheriff also, who is very involved, obviously, in this conversation, and then maybe we can go to the next step, which would be a motion, if that's okay.
Very good. That's fine. I was hoping to avoid the sheriff. He went to high school with me.
Mr. Anderson, I just want to take the opportunity. I just want to take the opportunity to, as a chairman, to thank you for all the work you've done because as a volunteer of the community, that's how this Commission and this county continues to go forward, is with volunteers and without your service. I don't know where we'd be because five part-time commissioners did not have time to put enough meetings together to come up with the type of data that you have, and I greatly appreciate your time, and I hope that you will go forward with the steering committee. So, thank you.
Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm just here to kind of champion Craig's cause. I think he's done an incredible job for us, and I appreciate the compliments from the Commission. His leadership on this committee has been very important. This is not my first time going through this. We did a very similar process back in 1997, 1998, ultimately ended up with another facility to replace an aging one. We used a similar process, and one of the key components of that was involvement of the public, which Craig has been very good at. We published all the meeting minutes. We published all the reports. All the meetings have been open and public, and I think the way we were successful the last time in addressing this is that our community understood the problems that we were facing. And I think that this is the right road to involve the community, involve more groups to look at some of these specific areas so that we know, and I really like the direction that the committee took towards the end, and that is to address this incrementally. We cannot afford to build a 400-bed jail and open it in two years. We can't. Number one is, as is mentioned, it could be $20 million plus. There's that annual operating expense. Yet if we're able to do it through steps and we replace the Community Correction Center with, you know, fewer beds than the 10-year projection, we'll be able to move that current staff out there, and so our operational costs won't be as high. They may go up, but they won't be as high. And it's interesting that as Bill Garnos has, we evaluated and heard from him on his report, it's more of a coincidence that we have an aging correctional facility at the same time our inmate population breakdown has changed significantly. With all of the alternatives to incarceration that we have in our community now, a lot of them that we operate, the 24/7 and SCRAM program with over 600 people on that, transitioning our work release to electronic monitoring to reduce the number of jail beds, sentenced-to-serv programs where inmates, you know, earn a day off their sentence for every day that they work in the community. All of those things are having an impact, and so we have fewer and fewer low-risk offenders in jail, but our jail numbers continue to rise, and it's a need for jail beds, not dormitories. One other thing the Garnos report was very specific on is that our dorm bed numbers are extremely high for our inmate breakdown. And so as we address this problem, it's not replacing the work release center with another work release center. It's replacing the work release center with correctional jail beds. And so I just appreciate all the work that's gone in. I think there are ways we can do this incrementally to make it affordable, and I think it's key, what Craig said about retaining experts to evaluate our downtown facility. I keep in my back pocket the evaluation of that downtown jail from 1998 when they said it needs to be replaced. So before I'm going to put any inmates in that facility, I need assurances from architects and people in jail design business that the way that was originally designed can't be utilized. They would have to totally refurbish the way that it is utilized because it was difficult to supervise inmates. It was, you know, it was a poor facility to run as a jail. And so I would never consider making that design a jail again. Now, there are ways to retrofit it, but I think that's something that we need the architects to tell us what the right answer is. And as Mr. Anderson pointed out, does that mean they close 4th Street for parking and extend the current jail to the north? Does it mean that they, or to the east? There's a lot of alternatives, but our committees have to do that, and I think that if the Commission gives us the authority to break into some subcommittees and look at some of those issues, that'll be the best way. So I appreciate, and again, I want to just, I can't say enough, I appreciate what Craig's done, and also, I hope that he stays on board because I think he was kind of hoping, thinking, maybe, that he was done. But he's not. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Bill or Mr. Anderson or Sheriff Milstead? I don't have any more questions.
Madam Chairman, I would suggest you turn to page six, and in terms of taking action, if you wish, this morning, you can go right down the list of recommendations we have. So our first recommendation is that you accept our report.
So moved.
I have a motion that we would accept the interim report.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the interim report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The next one would be to accept the Bill Garnos's forecast as the basis for planning and future facility capacity. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A motion and a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments for Bill before we move on? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Recommendation number three is to authorize the committee to proceed with a detailed planning study of the possible options for correctional facility expansion consistent with the Garnos forecast.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The fourth one is to retain architectural and structural engineering consultants to assist in the evaluation of the possible facility expansion options. Do we want to talk about that in building, or do you want to make a motion?
I think this is the opportunity to get going on it. We can go back to building after we get a few more details, but this will at least authorize us now to begin. We can't do anything without knowing what stuff is going to cost.
Christian Benega?
We do need to know the options because you can't make assumptions at this point. You need to have hard facts. And frankly, the other thing I'd like to say without maybe hopefully irritating the judges, but it's extremely important to understand the fact that the county owns the bus, we operate the bus, but the judicial system drives the bus. And for us to be successful, that has to be part of this task force. We cannot change that highway. And I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but I think it's important to know that the limits that we have in some cases are very small. Correct.
I would agree with that, Commissioner. Of course, that gets to the last point of involving them on the task force, and I can't overemphasize again the importance of doing that. The one question I have, Madam Chair, on this motion is, would you like the committee to retain them directly? You can authorize that. You can authorize us to review and make a recommendation to you at a later date, or you can retain that authority yourself. We're comfortable with either one of those three. I think the fastest way is to disauthorize the committee to do it, and I know we'd be happy to, but I leave that up to you.
I think that we should retain our own, I mean, they can make recommendations, but I think that those decisions need to come back to the council so that we have the final say on who we select.
Well, could we do that reasonably quick, within the next week or two? Come back to the Commission with a?
I think that's up to them. I think they've got resources to do it.
If we have two RFPs, then that might change it, but.
By the way, on this point, we have been advised by council that we do not have to do the RFP process. We may consider doing the RFP process, but yes, we'll have to schedule a meeting and discuss that as a committee.
I think that Commissioner Beckus.
Well, having to deal with, I'm glad former Commissioner Hayek is here. Thank you for being here, Ian. But having gone through this process before, I think it's very important that the Commission remember that the buck stops with us, and if you really want to get something, unfortunately, bring too many cooks, you're going to spoil the broth. I think it's important that this Commission take the active role in driving this because it's going to be this Commission that has to educate the voters to understand the process that we're moving forward with. I think that they, I think the judges, and I also think DOC, including the new warden at South Dakota State Penitentiary, Darren, used to be, you know, our warden here, he's uniquely aware of the situation that we have here at the county. I think that we should get their input. I also think that if we really want to unfortunately create something that we don't have a lot of control of, we leave it in the hands of other people to start, for lack of a better term, buying the window dressing and also putting together what cabinets you're going to be putting into your kitchen, suddenly, we've lost control of it. And I really think it's important that we drive this particular process. Case in point, we ran out of money when we built the courthouse. We were over budget, and the commissioners had to get together and redraw the plans. And I'll tell you what, there were some judges that were very upset with some of the retooling that we did on the courthouse design back in, you know, 1996 when we were originally building that. So I think it's important that we remember that we are the ones that are going to have to answer to the public on this.
Commissioner Kelly?
I don't think that what that fourth item says is retain the architectural to assist in the evaluation of possible facility expansion options. We need to know some really basics, and that'll give us some general costs. We don't, you know, we're not in, I don't think we're in final plan design or anything like that phase right now, but if we came back in a week or two and said, we would like to hire this architect to do this amount of money, would that, I mean, the Commission, yes, I agree, ultimately, the kitchen has to make that decision, but somehow, we have to get this thing, this train moving. I'd like to see that where we can now begin, you know, we can meet and discuss who we want, I think, and then come back to the Commission and say, listen, here's what, you know, here's what we're looking at, because now we've got to expand into, you know, to the warden at the Penn or to Lake County, I mean, all that stuff then has to, we've got some idea of what general area we're talking about money.
Comment from Ken, please.
I agree. Number four is a pretty focused thing. You're just trying to decide whether or not you are going to have the committee retain the architectural and engineering studies, or if you want to keep that amongst yourselves. The things with forming the multi-jurisdictional committees, and that comes, I think, as Commissioner Benega said, you can't even make those decisions until you know what your options are. So for number four, I mean, I'm just going to lay it out there, and I said, my recommendation would be that you keep that within yourselves, and staff here, between Robert and I, if we know that you want to either go out for RFPs, or if you are comfortable in us working with the committee and with, you know, what we do know is out there as far as making a recommendation for architectural selection, we can make that happen fairly fast. One of the other reasons I say we do it internally amongst yourselves, we are, we know what money's out there to do it. We are, we know what timelines we would have to follow if we need to do supplements to put money into budgets to do it, but I think number four can be done expeditiously as long as we know if you either want to do an RFP process for the architecture, or if you're going to rely on us to make a selection based on past experience and familiarity with the project that we have in hand. That's what we would need to know, but we can move forward quickly either way.
Ken, would you have a suggestion on what, it was a pretty long motion. I mean, on what we could do, how we could word number four? Do you think it's adequately worded where it is?
I think number four is adequately, is worded adequately where it's at. You just need to make the decision on whether or not you're going to keep it within yourself, and then I think that's what number four does, and that, rather than assigning it to a committee. I mean, but we can, if it's your desire to move quickly on this, we can move quickly.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion that the county commission retain architectural and structural engineering consultants to assist in the evaluation of possible facility expansion options.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions?
Two.
Commissioner, Kirsten?
Do you want to clarify whether you want to use an RFP process or not? At this point, you have the option of either because this is a professional area that's exempted under statute from doing that if you don't want.
May I be heard on that?
Yes.
I think we should wait until Commissioner Barth is here. This is a decision that I think all the commissioners should be able to voice their opinion on.
I just didn't want to leave that ambiguous there when it just said retain.
The only thing I will comment on that, you have your criteria for all five commissioners to be here, and you won't make that decision at least until the 21st because Commissioner Hybarger will be on next Tuesday, and so will I for the JDAI statewide steering committees.
I'm still of the opinion that if we're looking at going to RFPs or if we're going to not have RFPs, those are decisions that I think we've always had all the commissioners weigh in on, and I'm of that opinion.
I would agree. This is not a sprint, it's a marathon, and without having the correct roadmap, I don't know that we want to jump on that, but I do think we want to have all options to look at. So I'm certainly in favor of what Commissioner Beckus has indicated.
Can we just defer action on this item until the 21st? Can we just defer action on this item until 21st?
So we have a motion on the table?
Well, it's not really a motion. Is there a motion?
Yeah, there's a motion on the table.
I mean, the motion, we have a second.
We have a motion and a second on the table for the commission to retain architectural and structural engineering consultants to assist in the evaluation of the possible facility expansion options. Is there any other discussion?
Let's pass the motion and defer it. Or not pass it, I mean, let's just defer it.
We don't need to defer it.
Yeah, we'll decide later about the RFP.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
I will bring this topic back on the 21st, in order of discussion, and we'll do some, we'll outline your options for you, in a brief meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, thank you, commissioners, for your attention to this issue. I think it's an important one for the community. I thank you for allowing me to be here this morning, and the committee stands ready to do whatever you'd like us to do.
I'd also like to thank Bill Garnos for coming, and for all the work that you've done for us, not in just the past year, but in the past year, projections have been spot-on in our past jail, and I am confident that your current evaluations will be correct too, and we look forward to seeing you in the future as we work more on this project. So thank you very much.
Okay. We'll go back to item number 10, which is adhering to consider drainage permit application 14-03, submitted by Daryl Helgeson, to conduct agricultural drainage on property described as Track 1, Helgeson Tracks, East half, Southeast quarter, Section 10, Township 101 North, Range 47 West, in Valley Springs Township, David Heindl.
David Heindl, Planner 1, Minnehaw County Planning and Zoning. The Planning and Zoning Department received a drainage permit application from Daryl Helgeson to conduct agricultural drainage on its property. The proposed drainage project's located, is located in Section 10 of Valley Springs Township on the property legally described as Track 1, Helgeson Track, East half, Southeast quarter, Section 10, Township 101 North, Range 47 West. A notice of the April 8, 2014 public hearing was sent on March 11, 2014, to the four downstream owners, you can see in blue on the location map there, within one-half mile of the proposed outlet into Four Mile Creek, just southwest of this location. In addition, the Rock County, Minnesota Board of County Commissioners were notified of the April 8, 2014 public hearing. Daryl Helgeson is requesting approval of drainage permit 14-03 to install drainage tile to increase agricultural production and reduce erosion potential of the property. The proposed tile, eight inches, as you can see in red, will receive water from 17-inch culvert where the arrow comes in from Rock County, the hashed-out portion to the right of the proposed tile to the east, if you may, and that goes under 488th Avenue. This is looking north into Rock County, as you can see off to the right, the farmer east of the petitioner's, the applicant's property, or install a drain tile in his land to increase the flow of water. The new tile would be installed in Section 10 of Valley Springs Township and flow into an intermittent stream that flows southwest, which eventually empties about a mile and a quarter downstream into Four Mile Creek. The applicant received downstream permission off three downstream waivers from all property owners within one-half mile of the proposed outlet. However, a drainage board hearing is required because of the county's significance regarding the installation of new tile on property directly adjacent with Rock County, Minnesota. We have not received any concerns from Rock County Commission in regards to the drainage application. On March 31, 2014, staff conducted a site visit and determined that the proposed location for the drainage tile is located in the traditionally wet area. See, this is the culvert that would receive the water from Rock County, the Rock County side of 488th Avenue. The other side, this is the west side of 488th Avenue, which would connect with the eight-inch tile. As you can see, there's a natural waterway that's there. The petitioner is requesting to install the tile and fill in the ditch to increase agricultural productivity of the land. And we'll just go down this way, down a line of the drainage channel. And then this would be the proposed drain tile outlet, which is, according to the wetlands determination, there is a groundwater discharge and recharge wetland that's subject to the NRCS, Natural Resources Conservation Service, required setbacks for the proposed drainage tile area. However, if the proposed tile outlets at the level of the wetland, then the drain may be perforated all the way to the wetland area. There are no other wetlands in the proposed area.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 15 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2014 traveling baseball exhibit preparation-
Bill's in the corner.
Agreement between Minnehaw County and the city of Deadwood. Bill Hoskins.
Good morning, commissioners. This is an agreement whereby the Sealand Heritage Museums would provide design and production services in preparing an exhibition for the city of Deadwood. They, that's, that's, that's the project. This is, we're not doing research, label, copy, that's being done and provided to us. All the graphic images are being provided to us. Our staff is just doing the design layout, similar to what you have on the walls in the commission chamber. That's the project.
This was just brought to us because it hadn't been in his budget for this past year, so that's the only reason it's coming to us, just to make us aware. Look for a motion.
Play ball.
A motion and a second to play ball. All those in favor say aye.
Just a question. Is Deadwood paying the expense on this?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. We're getting paid.
We're getting paid to do it.
I'm sure they are using gambling money, their required money for historic preservation, and that's where this is coming from.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number 16 is to authorize the chairman to sign a listing agreement between Minnehaw County and Bender Commercial Real Estate for the sale of county property described as the north 450 feet, of the east 940 feet, of Track 1, Hall's addition, to the southeast quarter, Section 31, Township 102 North, Range 49 West, and the south 475 feet, of the west 942 feet, of Track 1, Hall's addition, to the southeast quarter, Section 31, Township 102 North, Range 49 West. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you know, earlier, or later, earlier last month, you did authorize the retaining of Bender Commercial Real Estate to market the property, approximately 19.7 acres of county property that we have in Hall's Track 1, for the museum archive project. What you have before you today is the listing agreement for that particular property. It's going to be our recommendation, based on our conversations with not only Bender Commercial Real Estate, but officials, other officials associated with the sale and marketing of the property. We offer this property for listing purposes at $3.40 per square foot, which will be inserted into the listing agreement. And that, the one thing I do want to remind you of, if you do get an offer to purchase that property, that purchase agreement will be brought to this commission for approval before anything will go forward from there. And that, so the purposes of the listing agreement is for marketing, so that Bender Commercial can do what they need to do to get the word out there that we have this property for sale. And that, so I do have Doug Brockhouse and Reggie Kipers here from Bender Commercial Real Estate, if you have any questions. I will say, I've been very impressed with the thoroughness that these individuals have displayed as we move forward with trying to market this property, and I think we're in good hands. So, we would recommend that in the blank area of the contract, we insert the reflective of $3.40 per square foot as the listing price for this property.
Are there any questions for Doug or Reggie? Commissioner Kelly?
I'm just glad we had this opportunity to give Doug and Reggie a civics lesson in how the commission operates. I know they've been out back live the whole time.
I would like to thank you for your patience, because we did try to scurry along, but that's how it goes. So, are there any other questions for Doug or Reggie?
To make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion approved, a motion and second to approve a listing agreement for $3.40 per square foot. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 17 is Minnehaw Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Liaison reports. Seeing none, we will move on. Is there any new business? Is there any old business?
Remember to vote.
They're old or new.
It's old and new, if you are-
If you're party, you're stalling.
Sioux Falls resident, make sure you vote.
I just wanted to make sure that you remember Commissioner Hyberger was appointed as the vice chair of the statewide JDAI steering committee, and she and I and Aaron will be going to Pierre next week, on Tuesday, the 15th, for the kickoff meeting of that committee to try to expand JDAI statewide. This is a big deal, and I think the committee's in pretty good hands with Commissioner Hyberger as the vice.
Yeah, thank you very much. We will be adjourning, and they'll be setting up for Board of Equalization, and we will be reconvening in a few minutes, so if you want to quickly-
We'll move to adjourn, we don't have to adjourn, been too-
You will have to adjourn as a county commissioner, and you will read adjourn when you come in as a Board of Equalization.
Move to adjourn.
A motion adjourned. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We will read adjourn, and if a read can be-